Join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Carter?
Present.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem, no?
Here.
Mayor Clarici will be noted as absent, as well as Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Gottberg.
Okay. Okay, item 2.2, consider appointing a temporary mayor pro tem. Mr. Warren.
Good evening, council. And so with the Mayor Clarici and Vice Mayor Gottberg not being able to attend tonight, staff requests that the city council appoint a temporary mayor pro tem to run tonight's meeting. The set appointment would end at the conclusion of this meeting. So are there any nominations for mayor pro tem?
I nominate Jackie No.
I would second that.
All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the confidence, fellow. Okay, that brings us to item three ceremonial matters, which we have none. We did not meet in closed session, so we do not have a report for number four. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
I will move the adoption.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That passes unanimously. Item six, brief comments by the city council.
I have none tonight.
I just wanted to give a quick shout out to, I don't know if anybody noticed, the brand-new roof on the scout hall. I'd give a shout out to my wife and her nonprofit for spearheading that effort with more roofing to put a brand-new, 100% free roof on our scout hall. It looks amazing.
Great, great. Thank you. Excellent. And both Ryan and I were at the Memorial Day celebration yesterday. That was a great event. If you've never been, I highly recommend you go. It's just a wonderful event. Okay. We will move to 6.2, receive a presentation on the 2025 regional blueprint. Mr. Holson.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Clint Holson. I'm the planning and programming manager with the Sacramento area council of governments. Just wanted to take just a few minutes, I'll be brief, of your time to talk about the plan. We're approaching the conclusion of nearly three years of work on this regional transportation and land use plan. So just a little bit of background on SACOG. SACOG, of course, is the metropolitan planning organization for the six-county region Eldorado, Placer, Sacramento, Sutter, Yolo, and Yuba counties, and then all of the 22 cities within. In Eldorado County, you also have EDCTC that serves as your state regional transportation planning agency, and we work hand-in-hand with them to meet both our federal and our state requirements for planning. So when we started developing this plan about three years ago, this is a requirement for the region. We have to update and maintain this plan every four years. One of the very first actions our board takes is to adopt kind of a policy framework. What do they want this plan to really focus on? What do they want the analysis and the discussions to focus on during the development of the plan? So for this plan, a triple-bottom-line framework is where our board went to advance goals in equity, environment, and economic development. We've taken more time with this plan. Typically, we would have adopted sometime last year. We got an 18-month extension from the state, and with that time, we were able to do a lot more outreach. So we were able to hit over 6,000 people in the 6,000 residents across the region in every single jurisdiction, every county, every city. And what we heard, what emerged from all of that outreach, or kind of what people really valued, what they wanted to see in this long-term vision in the blueprint. And this is just a highlight of some of the themes that we got from our outreach. But at the top, ensuring access for all residents, the big one that came up was, I'll get there in a second, was both housing and safety. And not just safety, driving your car, safety waiting for transit, but also protection of your life and your property during natural disasters, and ability to escape and recover from those. Those were things that really resonated with residents when we asked. So designing two ways out, we did focus groups as well as surveys, scientific polling, all for this. And one of our focus groups, the emergency evacuation came up as a big theme. On here, you can kind of see what the big themes in our outreach were. I mentioned housing. And this isn't capital A, affordable housing. What we learned when we asked residents about their needs on housing was, we're a suburban region. 90% of the region lives in the suburbs. People like that little bit of elbow room. They want space. That's why they maybe come to Placerville or move into Eldorado Hills. But at the same time, housing affordability to kids that want to get into their first apartment, their first house, we just don't have enough affordable housing throughout the region for all stages of the lifecycle. And so that's what residents really meant by affordable housing. My first apartment, my first home, and then when I'm an empty nester down the line, I might want to resize, or I might want to move out of the city or out of the suburbs. And so the ability to move like that was of utmost importance. Crime and public safety was at the top, and then providing more transportation options for people was also at the top. And traffic congestion was right there, along with transportation choice. We also do a lot of technical analysis for this plan. This plan is constrained both in, by the dollars that this region can expect to get over the next 20 years, but also by how much growth we expect to see in this region, in people, in jobs, and in homes. And we are one of the fastest-growing regions, or the fastest-growing region in the state, one of the fastest-growing places in the United States. So we expect to grow between now and 2050, but we're seeing birth rates go down globally and nationwide. That's why you see a slowing of that growth rate, especially as you get into the final decade, that 2040 to 2050 time period. So we are growing the entire time. We're growing faster than the rest of the state of California, but that is diminishing over time. This is a growth forecast, so what we're planning for is around 600,000 people coming to the region over the next 20 years. We're around 2.5 million people today, just over 3 million people by then. So on the left, you're seeing the whole region. And then there's some modest growth in Placerville as well, around 900 additional people, 500 homes. An important thing about the blueprint is there is nothing that is in this blueprint that it doesn't derive directly from local plans. So city general plans, any kind of specific plans, proposals, transportation plans, those are where the blueprint draws all of its strategies. So there's nothing that we bring into the blueprint that isn't already part of a city vision. In terms of where those people are going, that's really what this plan is about, is how do we accommodate all of those additional people? The dark blue areas on the map, that is the existing regional growth footprint. And what the blueprint is calling for is about 2/3 of the growth that we see over the next 20 years would continue to happen in that darker blue area. And then those lighter blue areas are places that are, there's some development there, or there's nothing, and they're just kind of starting, but these are kind of the newer developing areas. So this would be an expansion of the regional growth footprint into those lighter blue areas. So where are we going? I mentioned, this blueprint, it is not a one-size-fits-all. It derives from local plans. So one thing we know with certainty is that there is just not enough money coming into the region to pay for all of our transportation needs. We run around $400 million to $500 million a year short in just maintaining the system, pavement system, region-wide. When we did the call for transportation investments to see what the appetite was for investment across the region for this plan, we had got over $14 billion worth of investments. And over the next 20 years, we have money to invest in roughly half that, around $7 billion, $7 to $8 billion. So it's, it is, this plan is a lot about doing less or doing more with less. So how can we squeeze additional capacity out of the existing system? Projects like Trip2Green in Placerville are kind of how you see that play out down at the local level. If we can't afford the interchanges, how can we make more efficient use of the system that we do have? And that's just something that we have to consider region-wide, because there's just not a lot of prospects for a lot more transportation dollars coming, anytime soon at least. So addressing transportation challenges, I mentioned, planning for and being resistant to natural disasters like wildfires, lower-cost or quicker projects, things where we can demonstrate whether a concept would work before we fully invest in the infrastructure project. And then can we look to solutions like technology, things like Trip2Green or other technology solutions that don't necessarily result in needing to add expensive lanes or additional capacity? And then, of course, if we're $400 million to $500 million a year short on just maintaining our system, really need to prioritize that. Both with new investments, if you're investing in the system, can you invest in the existing transportation system where you're also getting maintenance benefits, as well as just that preventive maintenance? So I mentioned we're coming to the end of this three-year plan update cycle. We are planning, our board on Thursday will decide whether to release the plan. We're asking them to release the plan for 55, roughly a two-month public comment period that would start June 6th, run through August 8th. Really encourage folks to jump into the plan, and there is a policy section of the plan that is really in there intended to help cities and counties get state and federal grants. So if we can get review of those policies and the strategies and the implementation actions in the plan, we're trying to highlight what different jurisdictions around the region are doing to show how they are part of this larger vision, which we think will really help us attract more investment out of the state and the federal government. If you can show that you are part of this larger vision that is meeting federal and state requirements and policy objectives, that is what these grant programs are looking for. So any comments that we can get back, we want this plan to be able to work for you, not just sit on a shelf. If, after that public comment period, we'll go back to our board, we'll make adjustments to the plan based on what we hear, and then we're hoping to adopt by November of this year. And then we're off to the races on implementing the plan. And SACOG doesn't implement alone. Of course, a lot of that is, we don't have the authority, we don't have any authority over land use. All of those decisions are made at the city and county level. But we do have programs to help you. So our Green Means Go program, we established to try to attract money to invest in the underground infrastructure that oftentimes holds up development along major, like old, aging commercial corridors, things like that, that weren't designed to kind of carry the type of water and waste that you might see from residential development. So we've got the Green Means Go program. We're working with the San Joaquin council of governments in the Bay Area to kind of look at the mega-region, and have developed some kind of joint projects or investments that connect us with the economy of the Bay Area and the Central Valley as well. And then our mobility zones project is, it's an equity project, but it's a lot more kind of grassroots community up. We'll bring the data, but it's the community and the local jurisdiction that decide what is relevant to them and where they want to focus, where they think their equity needs are. So with that, I will pause my presentation and see if there are any comments or questions for me before I get out of your hair.
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. I wanted to let everyone know that staff just put a link to this on our city website so that people can go and review that, because a lot of times we say things and people are like, how do I find it? Where do I find it? And so just wanted to let everybody know that we put that link for their convenience. Other comments, questions?
I have a couple of quick questions. So I'm curious, you know, the first goal, equity, how do you think SACOG would define equity? And how do you think that they're trying to accomplish this overreaching equity goal through this blueprint?
The way that we are trying to define equity, very simply, is that our systems work for everyone, for all residents. Is, we're not defining it by any sort of kind of characteristics or qualities. We do bring that data. So if we, if, when we are doing the mobility zones project, that's a good, kind of a case study in how we're looking at equity. What we're bringing are, you know, your marriage and birth rates. We know that from the federal government that marriage and birth rates are really important to them. They want to prioritize those areas. So we're bringing that kind of information. We can bring race, we can bring ethnicity, we can, our race and ethnicity, we can bring income, we can bring any of that data. And it's really more about, we also, there's a socioeconomic side, there's also the geography side as well. There's geographic equity that we look at when we're thinking about equity at SACOG. And so I think it really is about a tailored approach. Not every community is going to have the same type of equity issues. In some places, it's a rural-urban thing. In some places, it's a low-income affluent thing. It's going to vary across the region. And so I think we're not trying to put a hard definition to it. It's a lot more of a, we want our systems to work for everyone. We don't want to leave anyone behind, but we've got to work with the locals to understand what that paradigm looks like at the neighborhood and community level.
Okay. And then it's sometimes difficult for those of us in rural communities to get, you know, lumped in. You know, you mentioned local, you know, land use and stuff like that. I mean, obviously, you know, Folsom Ranch or Cordova, even Eldorado Hills, you know, have vastly different goals and land use policies than we do here, especially in city limits. So what kind of, I guess responsibilities would be a good word for it? Like, how does this try to shape our local land use policy, or does it try and shape local land use policy? Because being lumped in with those cities that are, you know, grow at all costs, as opposed to us where we're pretty much built out, how does that all work with this blueprint?
So the blueprint to the bigger cities and the smaller cities cannot and does not dictate land use policy. I mentioned it pulls directly from your city general plan. So any housing development, any employment development that we include in the region is coming from your general plan. What our plan largely does, if you add up all of the capacity from all the general plans and specific plans around the region, there's a lot of optimism about how much growth we're going to see. It's probably three to four times the amount we're going to see over the next 20 years or 30 years by 2050. And so what our plan is doing is not so much dictating what your land use policy should be, but what is a common-sense phasing strategy for the region to employ so that we're accommodating that growth in a logical way? So that you're not building something out in the middle of nowhere, and you're not getting a grocery store and a elementary school for 15 years. Instead, can you build closer to where there is a elementary school and a grocery store today, so you don't have to travel as far? That's really what the plan is doing, is it's trying to phase kind of the growth that you see in local plans in a way that puts it closer to our existing assets and neighborhoods so that people don't have to travel as far. But it doesn't dictate your land use policy.
Okay.
The threshold, I'll finish with this, the threshold for kind of consistency with a plan is general use intensity and density. So it's a very generalized plan.
Okay. I think that answers my questions.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We'll open that, we'll open this for public comment to see if they have any questions you might be able to answer. Thank you. Okay. Public comment?
I heard the speaker initially mention escape routes for, get out of here. And I'd like to know about specific plans. Is there a place you can go to to see what kind of blueprints they have now? We've all remember those images of Paradise Fire where people were stuck in their cars, incinerated. And if you look at places like what runs parallel to Highway 50, Pleasant Valley Road, it's something that was made for foot and horse traffic, you know, in the 1850s. I don't know how you could expand that. So that seems like, of all the things that were mentioned, the biggest priority is having infrastructure that would allow for evacuation routes. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Anyone else want to comment? Ask a question? No? I see Woody back there. Would you like to address that?
Evening, councilmembers. Woody Delory, I'm the executive director of the Eldorado County Transportation Commission. To address that comment, I think, before I address that comment, I want to touch on Councilmember Carter's questions, a couple of them we haven't had the opportunity to meet yet. So unfortunately, I haven't been able to brief you on. The Eldorado County Transportation Commission is the regional transportation planning agency for the West Slope, including the city of Placerville. We develop our own locally managed and developed regional transportation plan that feeds into this plan. So the discussion around equity, we have been for the last two years involved with SACOG on defining what equity means for Eldorado County. And, you know, we, you know, if you look at a lot of the metrics that many agencies use, just to be blunt, we're old, white, and rich, right? But we have an extensive senior population that are distributed throughout the rural parts of the region. So looking at equity through that kind of senior lens and the underserved folks that live in those, in those more remote rural areas, that's what SACOG has been using for our kind of role in this equity space. To Kirk's comment on the evacuation preparedness, this plan is not a transportation plan as far as developing routes or identifying, you know, new routes or new roads. As Clint mentioned, they're using the cities and the counties' general plans to incorporate the project into that, into this long-range plan. We have developed a greater possibility of evacuation preparedness plan. It looks at ways that we can improve the transportation network to be more effective in the event of evacuation. CAL FIRE, OES, all of those emergency response agencies will tell you, they will not map out evacuation routes for fire. You know, flood is a different thing. You can map out for flooding. You can't map out routes for fire. So we are trying to make improvements to the existing system, you know, wider shoulders, clearing of the brush, things like that. But there are not projects identified in this for evacuation preparedness.
Thank you, Woody. And again, I just want to encourage everyone to go ahead and go online, review this. I think they said we have 60 days. And definitely give your feedback. They really do want it. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to item seven, consent calendar. Do we have any members who want to pull an item? No? Okay. We will open consent calendar for public comment. Okay, seeing none, we will bring it back.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
I will second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem, no?
Aye. Okay. This brings us to item eight, public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the city council under specific circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit the speaker's time to three minutes. You are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or may invade an individual's personal privacy. Would anyone like to make a public comment that's not on the agenda?
All right, David Zonski, maybe a little bit of silliness, but hoping to help balance the budget. So before the new pavement job was done on Broadway, which is great, occasionally the city police would hang out on Wiltie and occasionally write a ticket if someone ran the stop sign on Broadway heading east. I would say that since the paving job, people are much more certain that if they're in the left lane, the stop sign does not apply to them. And so I think there could be a real nice money-making opportunity to once again ambush them, hiding out on Wiltie next to the CCW, and catch them, because hardly ever do I, I have to get out Wiltie and to escape where I live. And I would say, my wife gets mad at me pretty often because I hit the horn because they went through the stop sign again. So it's just an opportunity for a money-making idea. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And our PPD, they're taking notes, so it has been noted. Thank you very much.
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville. Good evening. I'd like to comment on our fire gates. It seems to me like we have a lot of fire gates that are really not serving the purpose, and all they are doing is making it impossible for a fire engine to get where it needs to go. So I would like to propose that we eliminate these fire gates in the city of Placerville. There might be one or two that we actually need to keep, but most of them just need to go away. So that would be my proposal, is let's get rid of these outdated fire gates so that we, because when you're talking about access and egress, that's a major problem. You can't get out, the fire trucks can't get in, you've got a locked gate. Let's get rid of those gates.
Thank you, Sue.
Good evening, council. To the fire gates thing, I agree it probably would help with access, but you might have, some of that might have been codified as, and as requirements for development to kind of control through traffic and such. I remember a couple of them are. So you might have to go back and do some housekeeping, keeping for that. And then just, I'm still requesting a future agenda item to place the 1906 railroad bridge onto the city's historic register of important places and such, because it's just completely forgotten down there. So, and I'm just thinking that if it at least is on your historic resource inventory list, it gains a chance at some grant funding for some maintenance. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, anyone else? Seeing none?
Good evening. My name is Catherine Stepani. I live on Canal Street. And I would like to add to this gentleman's opportunity. I don't know, there is a lot of speeding on Canal Street. Right now, school is out, but during school, it's a death trap for quite a few pets. I have personally lost a pet. And Canal Street is one of the streets that is slotted for improvement and to add a bike lane. And unless you either post a 25 per mile hour, you know, speed limit or do something, I foresee more accidents. And there are lots of places to hide on Canal Street.
Yeah, we have a theme tonight. Thank you, Catherine.
Good evening, everybody. I am Uncle Fuzzy. I do have a real name, but I don't use it because my mother abused it. In other words, I was in trouble all the time. I just want to let you know, there are some things going on in this place, and I'll see you guys in two weeks, okay?
Thank you. Okay. Usually, that's not allowed, but it's a quick meeting. I'm going to allow that, so come ahead. That's okay.
This is actually for the fire chief or whatever. For those of us who are renewing our fire insurance, I was told that Placerville was deemed a fire. And, okay, thank you.
Thank you. You have the right people in the audience tonight. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we will close public comment and move on to 8.2, written communications. Do we have any?
There were no written communications.
No written communications? Okay, thank you. Okay, item nine, we have no items pulled from the consent calendar. Item 10, we have no ordinances. Item 11, public hearings, we have one. 11.1, consider approving the engineer's report for the Cottonwood Park and Orchard Hill landscaping and lighting maintenance districts and directing NBS to prepare and submit the levy of assessments to Eldorado County for the placement on the fiscal year 2526 secured property tax rolls. Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. So this is a routine item, and it's actually part two of a two-part series. Part one occurred at your meeting held on April 22nd, when the council adopted a resolution declaring its intention to provide the annual levy and collection of assessments for the city's landscaping, lighting, and maintenance districts as required by state, streets, and highways code. Part two requires the council to hold a public hearing, which is scheduled for tonight, and adopt a resolution approving the two engineer's reports in your agenda packet. The city currently has two LMD districts, Orchard Hill and Cottonwood Park. The engineer reports for both districts present status quo budgets and levy amounts. The current level of assessments for both districts are adequate in covering the basic costs for operating and maintaining the districts. So tonight, staff respectfully requests the council to approve the 2526 LMD assessments by adopting the resolution as presented. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Questions from the council? No? Seeing none, we will open this for public comment.
Good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Pro Tem. Marian Washburn, Zellie Lane. I have a question about maintenance responsibility. And if you could, if I could ask you to- please, access the map that was given to you with the layout of the lots on Cottonwood Park. And the reason why I bring this up is my property backs onto Clay Street in one of those zones. And I've been uncertain for over 20 years about where the responsibility lies for upkeep of the zone, or the strip, I guess is best labeled. If you look at the map, on the west side, to the west of the senior apartments, there's an open space that parallels on both sides, east and west of Clay Street, and is not designated within the landscaping district. And that's my question, is that it's been an open question to me, anyway, who is responsible for maintaining that area? For the 20 years, it's been not maintained at all. And the last two years, it's been wonderfully maintained. The goats were brought in, and some large machinery was brought in and cleared a lot of the dead debris. But because I'm unclear as to who is responsible for the maintenance, it seems logical to think that whoever is clearing it cannot do it every year. That's not, we won't expect that. But there's a number of houses along Azalea and Pleasant, and then, of course, the senior apartment. So, I would appreciate if it could be defined, who is responsible for clearing out of weeds and debris, because they're both steep slopes and very heavily choked with weeds and debris. How often could it reasonably happen? So, I decided this is my opportunity to ask the question, since we're dealing in this area. So, if anybody has a definitive answer, I would really like to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Marion. Are there any other public comments for 11.1? Okay, seeing none, we will bring it back. Does staff have an answer to that question?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I believe at least a portion of that right-of-way is in city right-of-way. But to the extent, I'm not sure how far up the hill it goes. And I don't know if our city engineer is familiar with that area. We can research that and get back to Ms. Washburn.
Okay, we will reach out and get more information for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any further discussion from the council? Do we have a motion?
I will move adoption of the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, can we get roll call, please?
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem, no?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, this brings us to 12.1, Consider Approving a Project List Recommended by the Cannabis Community Benefits Committee and Directing Staff to Include Said Project in the Proposed 25-26 Fiscal Year Budget. I'm going to say Mr. Warren, since it says Mr. Morris, and Mr. Morris isn't here, or should I direct this to Mr. Nishihara?
Mr. Nishihara, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem Mayor. Appreciate it. Tonight, we have before you three recommendations from our cannabis committee. And I'm going to actually pass it over to our chairperson for the committee, Ms. Annie Aubrey. But I do want to highlight a few things that this benefits fund has been able to support us with. And if you had a chance yet, our downtown restrooms are open. Thank you to this wonderful fund. We also had an opportunity to renovate the roof downtown, which was a great opportunity for us. So, this benefit fund really is truly exactly that. It benefits our community in a wide variety of ways. Tonight, there are a few options in there, and I'll highlight them just briefly. The option for the FireSafe Council Grant, our Adopt a Trail Program for Trailer and Equipment, Disc Golf Course Improvement, which is also located at Lyons Park, and our Meridian Barricades. We get a pretty good amount of requests, and there are a lot of passionate individuals that are in our community that we would love to fund and serve. And with that said, you have our staff report, and I will turn it over to Ms. Annie if she wants to add anything around our conversations for the committee. And I'm available for questions if you have any.
I'm excited to hear. The bathrooms are open. I didn't know that. That's really, really awesome. Anyways, hello, council. I'm Annie Aubrey. I'm the chair of the Cannabis Community Benefits Committee, speaking on behalf of our seven-person committee, where we have two community members, two dispensary operators, and three city officials on the committee. As you know, all the funds are collected from a 1% fee on all cannabis sales in the city. This has averaged a little over $80,000 a year. Each year, we have a wealth of options and opportunity to use these funds to aid in projects all over town. I do want to highlight where we started and where we have moved our focus and why. Originally, we put a little bit into a lot of projects, across a lot of different areas. Doing that, we learned some things along the way. One, a little bit of money doesn't go very far anywhere. So, we really only end up with a few projects each year that we need to focus on. Also, we want to highlight that all of these sales have been made by adults in our community for products only adults have access to. Within the past, we've been offered opportunities to support grants for high schools, upgrades to parks, and other underage-focused activities. It has upset some in the community and can create a negative view on our intentions and why we are spending money on kids. Grooming is a word that has been used against us. We did set up a grant for just high school seniors. That was quickly shut down. We also fixed the steps and deck at the community pool. But after some of the feedback we received, after doing this, we, as a group, decided that we want to focus more on the community that supports us and funds this program, which are the adults in our community. We also want to provide funds to family-friendly events or things that benefit the community as a whole, which is why you've seen us vote to fund new downtown bathrooms that support tourism and all the local businesses, the bell tower upgrades, the lights at Lyons Baseball Park, a school resource officer vehicle, which is the Jeep we all see driving around that the local police use. So, having said all that, we do see that there is a need for several parks in our city that need expensive upgrades, but we don't feel we are the appropriate group to fund these upgrades. However, we hope you see the items we plan to fund will do a great deal of good for the families and community alike. I only address that because it comes up every year on why we're not funding the parks. So, the four projects are, first, each year, we like to fund the Placerville Fire Safe Council Grant. They provide a great service to the community and rely on these funds. Second, we also propose to fund an entire trailer for the Adopt a Trail Program, which will include equipment for each of the groups that go out in our community and clear the trails for everyone to enjoy. Third, Lyons Park is a park also in need of several upgrades. It makes the list every year and is highly trafficked by the community. We see the love for the outdoors in our community has, which is why so many of us have chosen to live here. Disc golf has grown in popularity, and people travel all over to play different courses. We think updating the holes to make it a clear course will provide an activity for all to enjoy and hopefully bring in more tourism at a minimum cost. And lastly, we want to use the largest to-date bulk of funds on a contribution to Meridian Barricades that the city can use at their discretion to provide appropriate safety measures for street closures when we host events throughout the town. Our city currently has to borrow them from Folsom and arrange with all the other cities that have to use these same barricades. Our community really shows up for these events downtown, and they really bring everyone together to share in joy and community. We also want to make it easier to afford and host these events for the city and the community alike. We saw over the past year, a real push to save the events, and felt this would be a great option that would make everyone happy. Unfortunately, these are extremely expensive, beyond our capabilities to fully fund. So, we put half of our budget to this, and the city found someone else to sponsor the rest of it. So, we appreciate your support in approving these proposed projects. It's never easy taking a long list with seven representatives and breaking it down to just a few choices. But I think we did a pretty good job and look forward to seeing these upgrades in our community. I'm available for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Questions?
Hey, Annie. Have you guys talked with the, like, what kind of upgrades are you planning to do for the Disc Golf? Or have you talked to the Disc Golf Association? Do you have any idea what the money's going to be spent on?
Not the association, but it was, each one of the placards are pretty deteriorated. You can't see what the course is. And so, there should be like a map of what the course is, and then each hole. So, there is going to be grounds work that is not included in this. And hopefully, our trailer can help with the grounds work.
Excellent. Looking forward to the improvements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to make a recommendation. So, in being transparent, I want to present that to the council and the public so they can comment on what I have to say. Because I want to look at option two, where we would approve the committee's recommendation for the FireSafe Council, the Adopt a Trail Program, Trailer and Equipment, and the Meridian Barriers. But I would like us to go back and reevaluate the $12,000 for the Disc Golf Course. And I have several reasons for that. In talking with staff today, because I know that we've had ongoing problems where two of our holes are on private property when they were originally built. And our first hole actually quite often has a conflict with picnickers because people throw into where people are there. And so, I asked if this proposal had taken into account those things that we know that we need to do and change and move, and it does not. So, I'm not really sure that this is the best use of funds, especially when we're looking at a year where we have such a tight budget. I'd like that committee to reevaluate and see if that's really the best community benefit that we have, especially after looking at our budget and what we cannot fund this year, and all the things that might have been on that in other places. I'm just not convinced that this is the best place that we should be putting the money, considering the course is not whole. So, and the other comment I wanted to make about that is, this course was put in, I think it was back in the 80s, and they had come to the city and said, hey, can we put this in? No one's using it. Let us use it for now. And, you know, that was great for then. But we don't have a volunteer agreement, and I would like to see something like that. You know, I ask people, I know kids who play frisbee golf, and I say, why don't you guys go to Lyons Park? Because I don't ever see you guys there. And they're like, well, the weeds are a problem. There's so much graffiti. And so, I think we would benefit from having a volunteer agreement with the group who's really advocating and working for that. Because as we move forward and we're looking at our tight budgets, we're really going to have to have that kind of community support agreements and accountability for each other. So, that's why I'm recommending that we approve the three items, but go back and take a look and make sure that that $12,000 couldn't better be used on something that doesn't need a lot more work. So, with that, I will open it for public comment.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident and member of the Placerville Fire Safe Council. And I would like to thank the Cannabis Committee for their help to fund the Fire Safe Council. Basically, they are our funding for the year, and allow us to put on the event every year to inform people how to get ready for wildfire, what they can do to improve their property, and to ember-proof their homes. And provided, in the past, we have provided somebody to go out and actually work with people who wanted to come and ask, what can we do? And but the main event really helps a lot of people because it's open for everybody. And there are a lot of people there who share information with people as to what ember-proof vents mean, and how to get them installed, and what defensible space clearing looks like, and where and which things need to happen for that. And without the Cannabis Committee's funding, we could not do this. So, we are very appreciative and want to say thank you.
Thank you, Sue. I think we're all appreciative of that. It's one of those great community items.
Hi, David Zelensky, Placerville Fire Safe Council. Thank you very much to the Cannabis Committee and to everyone for considering this. I thought our event was very successful. Agencies were just knocking on our door right up to the last minute. More and more just kept pouring in. So, our communication to the agencies was amazing. I would say the people who came were very engaged, and they had a good environment to have deep and meaningful conversations. They were very motivated. I would probably serve a couple hundred people. I'll take a minute to go over a few terms. Placerville Fire Safe Council is like a fictitious business name of the Eldorado County Fire Safe Council. So, we are a 501(c)(3). We have liability insurance protection. We can get grants through that legal entity. Fire Wise Community, which was brought up earlier, much of the work we do is to keep all of Placerville as fire-wise communities. I would estimate that we save about a half a million dollars a year in fire insurance premiums for all of the community because of being fire-wise. So, if you live north of Highway 50 and west of Highway 49, you're in the Placerville Northwest Fire Wise Community. If you're north of 50 and east of 49, you live in the Placerville Northeast Fire Wise Community. If you're south of 50, you're in the Placerville South Fire Wise Community. The city has maintained maps, as you can see on the city's website, which I appreciate. And we occasionally expand a little bit. So, we work with the Eldorado County Office of Wildfire Protection Resilience, I think it is, O-Wopper. And so, anyway, the money is mainly used to reach out to the public so they can come to that event. We have historically used it to help seniors with their actual events, and I hope we can maybe help one or two more seniors in the coming year. But that's for the committee to discuss. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Are there any other public comments?
Hi, Reese Carter, City of Placerville. I just wanted to say that I think that adopting all of these items as proposed is a good thing. While I understand, we definitely have had holes in our budget, and there's been some belt tightening happening, this money is not designed to fill those holes. And so, I think that there are definitely probably worthy causes that this money could go to, but they've spent a lot of time deliberating already on this. And I think that with regard to the work that needs to be done for Disc Golf, you know, that's going to take much longer. And the signs are degraded now and could use the updating now. So, my suggestion is to accept as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, we will bring this back to the council for discussion and a motion.
Yeah, I will say, I am an avid Disc golfer, and I do not play Lyons Park, just for this exact reason. It's a very difficult course, mostly due to lack of signage, sometimes lack of baskets. They get stolen. It is an underserved area of our community that I think, you know, I talk with a lot of Disc golfers when I'm out on the course. You know, I go to Cameron Park. I go to Rockland. I go to Shady Oaks, which is down in Citrus Heights. And I have a course in my backyard that I don't use. I would like to see, you know, understanding your concerns. I think it would be a good asset, you know, much like pickleball in that same park. It is definitely an area in our community that we are falling down on and not providing a venue for people. It's a big sport. And so, I think that, you know, given the fact that, you know, we have a whole committee that, you know, moles over these ideas, I think I would be inclined to support their proposals as they are currently, with the hopes of making that course playable, because honestly, it's very unplayable now. So, those are my thoughts. Otherwise, you know, I'm very much looking forward to the Adopt a Trail Program coming online. I think that's going to be a huge benefit to our community. And the Meridian Barriers, we've been talking about those for a long time. I'm super pleased that we're finally making that happen for our community. And I also want to thank the Cannabis Committee for the support of the FireSafe Council, because that is a big benefit to our community also. Overall, great job, guys. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think everything that's on the list definitely needs to be considered. That, one question I've got, and Jackie, you mentioned getting an agreement with the volunteer group that put that in. Would that be something that we would need to set as another agenda item to have staff work on, or?
I don't think that we do. But, you know, I have been up there. There are broken benches that the community is not maintaining. The graffiti, they're not maintaining. And so, I don't want to spend, I'm not going to put $12,000 out on a group who is not And so I don't want to spend, I'm not going to put $12,000 out on a group who is not doing the bare maintenance that they could be doing in our park and improving our park. You know, I just, I think we really need to look at all the needs in our community and say, is that the one where we should best be spending that $12,000? Now, if they come back and say, we've looked at all the other needs in our community, and that is the best one, I just, from talking to staff, I don't think that we've had that discussion where we have compared it to everything else that we need to do.
Okay. Quick question, I believe it's Annie that spoke. Did you guys have a chance to talk to the volunteer group that is supposedly in charge of the park or the course or anything?
This is the first time we've heard about this group that maintains the park. And to touch on the $12,000, if we don't approve it, it'll likely just go into the pot for next year, opposed to reevaluating everything, so it would just be like a savings. And because the group is really interested in this, it may become a larger project next year, so the $12,000 would be put into maybe something that becomes a larger disc golf investment potentially.
Okay. The other concern I have is you mentioned that apparently a couple of the holes are on private property. Okay. And assuming that the group probably has an agreement with the private property owners, they don't.
No, this is what I'm saying. This happened a really long time ago before things were building out and all those sorts of things. And like I said, at the parking wreck, we have known on this level that these are things that need to be corrected, and so I don't want to put money into things that need to be corrected.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, it's not that I don't want to put money into it. Thank you, Annie, for answering that question. I'm thinking if they put the $12,000 back into the kitty and we get something a little bit better built up when it comes to the disc golf course itself with the group and agreement, and then have a better plan in place to get it improved, I would agree with that. I don't want to necessarily not do it at all.
And that's not what I said. I said, you know, let's kick it back and have this.
Right, yeah.
Because, you know, I understand the committee works hard, and I appreciate that, but they also don't have a lot of the background.
Right, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, so at this point, yeah, I would be in agreement if the $12,000 would go back into the kitty, kind of earmarked for that project, but let's get an agreement with the group and get a couple of the things that are problems squared away. So, I mean, especially with the private property part, I think, you know, I mean, I don't know if the Cannabis Committee or the city wants to put money into improving something that is on somebody's private property, so.
Well, and people are finally starting to build. I mean, we're seeing fences go up behind Lions Park, and I think in the future, it could be an issue because things are finally moving where they haven't moved for decades, but they are now.
So I'm not quite sure how to set that as a motion, but.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we choose option two, where we approve the Fire Safe Council, the Adopt a Trail Program trailer, the meridian barriers, and we ask staff and the committee to go back and reevaluate that course, all the things that need to be done, and look at a volunteer agreement for next year to bring back something that'll be more whole.
And to earmark that $12,000 for that project.
That's the.
Oh, that would be the committee's choice?
That's the committee's choice. I was going to say, because we don't know what that next iteration looks like, we don't know what those agreements look like. So I hear that we're giving direction to continue to explore that so that it makes sense.
Okay, yeah, no.
Can I ask a question real quick? So, under the motion, staff would hold off putting it into the budget, the frisbee golf improvements, correct?
Correct.
Until?
Right. We're basically saying, let's go ahead and put that back in for next year, because it is, it's going to take a little bit of time to work through those issues, but sometimes it's worth taking the time and doing it right, rather than, like I said, if we have two holes that we really aren't legal holes, and we have, I know that I've heard numerous times that that first hole is a problem, well, then we're going to do all this signage, and then we're going to need to change all that signage. And so to me, it just makes sense to move forward with a whole plan, rather than, oh, let's just slap it up and realize we still know it's not right, and we still have problems. Let's fix the problems.
Yeah, because I think, I mean, it's great that we want to do that, and the signage would be great, but I think the signage would be just kind of a patchwork to a bigger project. And correct, if we have to end up moving those holes, then we got to change signs again. So, yeah. So with your motion, I would second your motion.
Okay.
That you put forward.
Okay. Any more discussion? No? Okay, can we have roll call?
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Protem, no?
Aye.
Okay, cool.
Okay. That brings us to item 12.2. Consider approving the job description and salary schedule for an engineering intern position and approving and affirming a new salary schedule effective June 7, 2025. Ms. Savage.
Thank you, Maro Protem, and city council members. The item before you this evening presents staff's recommendation to approve a temporary part-time engineering intern position. I think, as all of you know, the engineering department is very busy right now. We have three projects going into construction this summer, and we are very busy pushing along our largest two transportation projects, the Placerville Drive projects. These are very significant projects with critical funding deadlines that must be met. For the last nine months, the engineering department has had a vacant associate civil engineer position. Additionally, the assistant engineer position has also recently become vacant. It has been very challenging to find qualified applicants to fill these vacancies, and the engineering department is exploring other options to draw in more interest. We have concluded that the addition of an engineering intern would assist in supporting workload this summer, and not only would an engineering intern prove to be an excellent resource to staff, but it would also be a great opportunity for engineering college students who wish to gain experience and understanding of the practice of municipal civil engineering. Our hope is that we can show an intern how fun and rewarding it is to work at the City of Placerville, and perhaps they will be interested in returning for full-time employment after they graduate. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Have any questions?
I'm excited about this. I'm, you know, in talking with staff, I think that this is something, I'm almost viewing this as a pilot program. I think that we should, you know, consider expanding this into almost, into every department. You know, I could see this being in the planning department especially, you know, giving an opportunity for college students and keeping them in our culture, and like you said, hoping that they come back and work for us. And so, yeah, this is going to be, I think, a great opportunity, and look forward to it expanding in the city.
Yeah, I was just having the same thought. So this would be a great pilot program for, I mean, just even showing the county that they could actually possibly do this also. So, yeah, I think this is a great idea.
Okay. We'll open this for public comment.
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville. I too think this is absolutely a great idea. I've watched it succeed in other places. The Forest Service brings in people for summer hires that are college students, and some of them come back to work for the Forest Service full-time afterwards, and they can be some of our very best people because they have that enthusiasm, and they want to learn, and they want to do these projects, and it turns out to be a really great thing for both the student and for the city. So, yay.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will bring it back to the council for motion.
I move staff's recommendation.
I will second.
Can I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Protem, no?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. All right, we will move on to council reports from other agencies, and this is the time where most of us hadn't had a meeting. So Transit Authority hasn't met since our last meeting, Transportation Commission has not met since our last meeting, LAFCO.
LAFCO meets tomorrow.
Okay. SECOG Clarici is not here, so we will kick that for next meeting. Pioneer?
We did meet. We got a presentation from the California CCA Association mainly around kind of the future of electricity generation. One of the really interesting things that they spoke about was the supply chain issues, talking about especially transformers. Right now, we're two to four years out on transformers from the time that you order them, and it's very competitive, obviously. This is every, you know, it's not just Pioneer that's buying its PG&E and every other utility in the state. Circuit breakers are also two to four years out, switch gears, one and a half to two years, and all of these, for instance, the transformers, that wait time has expanded by one year since the last time they updated us. So there's a significant supply chain issue that's going to impact the ability of electricity generation in the state, and so they are keeping a close eye on that. That was really the only thing of interest to the city.
Thank you. Okay, Placerville Fire Safe Council. Vice Mayor Gottberg is not here, and I think we've talked about it enough tonight.
If you don't mind, I did go to the Eldorado County Fire Safe Council, if you don't mind. I'd love to give an update on that.
Please do.
So I went to the Eldorado County Fire Safe Council. They had an update, or I guess an outlook, fire season outlook from CAL FIRE and the Forest Service. It was a really interesting presentation. They are not especially optimistic about our upcoming fire season. We've had two extremely wet years, and this year has not been, you know, it's been average. So they're especially concerned about the grasses and the fuel growth over the last two years. Right now, they're talking about that the drying trend is about two to three weeks ahead of schedule, and they're seeing that accelerate. So they're looking at an early fire season and possibly a pretty severe one. So definitely, you know, we need to focus on our defensible space and all that stuff. They also, CAL FIRE gave an update on burn permits. Get your burns in, because we're very close to the end of burn season. They estimated probably the week of June 1, which is coming up here in a couple of days, for a suspension of all burning, so get your burn piles done.
Yeah, I mean, Friday, Saturday, I think 97 in Placerville, so definitely coming upon that season quick. All right, opportunity knocks.
We did not meet.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on our reports from other agencies?
I want to thank Ryan Carter for also bringing from Pioneer Community to the Eldorado County Fire Safe Council a grant opportunity. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will move to item 14, requests for future agenda items.
Yeah, we've heard a couple times now, this idea floated, I would like to see a possible agenda item in the future from staff for that railroad bridge, the possibility of getting it added to our register of historic, gosh darn it.
Register.
Yeah, the historic register. I would volunteer to work with the Historic Society and local people to get some more historic background for staff, but I would like to see an agenda item come back to get that added to our register.
Okay, so do you want to do some legwork first and then bring that back, or?
Yeah, I can do that. I'm not sure, I've not seen one of these agenda items come before council in my years of coming to meetings. I'm not sure who I would work with to make that happen, where the resolution would come from, but I would like to get that on the working.
Yeah, you can work with myself, Mr. Morris, and perhaps Carol, your Development Services Director, so.
Is there consensus on that? Majority consensus?
Yeah, I guess I'm wondering, I want to know the pros and cons of moving that action forward, so just make that part of the item that comes forward.
So an informational item to see what that process would entail and?
Yeah.
That would be perfect. Just to get the discussion going and get the freight train moving, if you will.
Would the council like to see something come back?
I'll work with staff on that. I'll get you some information, so we have a good presentation to the council.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Any other? Okay, okay, perfect. Item, okay, do we have any public comments on our number 14? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to item 15, city manager and staff reports. I didn't see a police report. Oh, it is. It's just so little now. It used to be bigger. Do we?
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Do we have any comments on our police stats? Anything you'd like to highlight or point out?
No, ma'am. I'm just here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right. 15.2, our fire station run report highlights.
Good evening. Within your packet, you'll have the stats for Station 25. You'll note the graphs are nice and large, so they're easily readable for you and the public. That's normal, don't worry. Don't take offense. You know, within the packet, you'll see the stats for Station 25. You know, they, again, were fairly busy during the month of April. And just an update, it's been a while since we chatted about our annexation process with Diamond Springs, I believe, on Friday. LAFCO sent out the information to all of the departments across the county, and we're hoping it's a discussion piece tomorrow evening at LAFCO, but we are moving through that process and hoping to be done around the end of the year, possibly January.
Great, thank you. Looking forward to seeing those updates. All right, 12.3, development services. Ms. Kendrick, is there anything you'd like to highlight for us?
Well, being my first update, I'd like to highlight that permits and fees are up and code cases are closing, so this was a wonderful report to read and pass on to the council.
Great, thank you. Questions? Okay. All right, 15.4, acknowledge and file the HDL sales tax and economic reports for the quarter ending December 31. Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the council. So this report isn't as positive as the last one, unfortunately, but it is what it is. So your Bradley Burn Sales Tax, which is your general fund sales tax, on the cash basis, was down by $33,726 or 2% year-over-year for the fourth quarter ending December 31. That did include prior period adjustments. When you remove those adjustments, like back taxes, it ended up being about a $45,635 decrease or 2.7%. The decrease was primarily due to decreases in the county and state pool, online sales tax, fuel and service stations, general consumer goods, and business and industry sales. We did assume a $28,807 or 1.7% increase, so the decrease actually was below budget by $74,442 or 4.4 percentage points. We're not alone. Eldorado County was down 3.2%. The Sacramento region was actually up by 2.4%, but that's because they had a very large fulfillment center have a positive adjustment in that quarter. So if you remove that, they would have been down approximately 3% as well. The state was down by 1.1%. We appreciate all of our businesses, especially our top 25 generators, and Verizon Wireless was added to the list, and Shell was dropped off. And it's important to note that both Office Max and Rite Aid stores closed during the first quarter of 2024, which also impacted the fourth quarter. But the nice thing is, this will be the last quarter in which we're comparing, you know, one year with those two businesses and one without, so that'll help us looking at the first quarter. Measure H, J, and L, sales taxes performed slightly worse, unfortunately. For example, Measure J, which is used for enhancing police officer salaries and benefits, was down on the cash basis $29,123 or 7.6%, which did include prior period adjustments. When you remove those adjustments, it ended up being about an $18,472 or 4.9% decrease. We assumed $4,875 decrease or 1.3%, so the actual performance was $13,597 or 3.6% below budget. This decrease, again, primarily due to building construction, general consumer goods, business and industry, fuel and service stations being below last year's comparison. Let's see here. So HDL forecast sales tax statewide remained flat through 24, 25, about negative 0.1% throughout the state, and mild growth in fiscal year 25, 26 of about 1.6%. So that's just not Placerville, that's statewide. The opening of Desi's Pizza Bites, which I saw the sign that says, "Opening Soon," which is exciting. The second grocery outlet, which I see their facade going up, and O'Reilly's Auto Parts just opened, so that'll be a nice sales tax generator, which will strengthen Placerville's sales tax. Looking at the HDL sales tax trends and economic drivers, it's about flat overall. Not a whole lot of change there. There's ups and downs, but when you look at the report in aggregate, it's about the same. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? No? Okay, we will open item 15.1, 2, 3, and 4 for public comment. Seeing none, we will bring it back to the council.
Okay. Oh, Mayor Protem, I have one other item. Actually, Mr. Nishihara has a report on our public downtown restroom. Dennis, if you could.
So, again, thank you again to the Cannabis Committee and all of our
So again, thank you again to the cannabis committee and all of our staff who worked really hard to open our downtown restrooms that are currently in service. Unfortunately, this past weekend, we did experience an influx of heavy vandalism at our city park. It was a very, it's going to be a very expensive and a very lengthy repair process. The porcelain, we have pictures and we filed a report with the police department, very extensive repair, very pricey repair. But but one thing I want to, I want us to keep in mind, and really, it's just a a community kind of outreach and sharing, I want all of us to be mindful of how important and how strong our community is in regards to not just seeing something, but being brave enough to say something, right? And so we want to, we want to realize that we've made a significant investment into our downtown restrooms. We want to continue that investment. But I also want to kind of do a little bit of a rally cry to all of the residents that are out there and our visitors that come through town, that not only are we doing this to help our our families and our children and our businesses in town, but we also want to have a safe, clean, and welcoming environment, whether it is in a public restroom or in our parks, whether it has to do with benches and/or restrooms, like I was saying earlier. So my my ploy is, I guess, and I want to proselytize, if you're in the community, we have resources, 311 online. The police department also has an app that can be downloaded. All of this information is located on our website. You can do it anonymously or you can call our offices as well. But realistically, we are a very small, loving and caring community that puts a lot of heart and effort into everything that we do. So my request to the community as well as staff and residents and visitors is please, don't be shy. If you see something, please say something. If the more eyes that we have out there and the more ownership that we create within our community, the better and longer lasting our investments will be. Again, it was a very unfortunate situation that happened at City Park. We're lucky no individuals were hurt, but it is going to shut that restroom down for a significant period of time until we're able to assess what the repairs are going to be. With that said, I want to protect the downtown restroom as well because it is welcoming and it does help to drive economic development as well as a lot of our families feel safer. You want to make sure that you're going to a clean restroom, especially when you're shopping downtown and driving through town. So again, I encourage everyone to please speak your mind. If you see something, please definitely say something and share it to the best of your ability. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our downtown restroom did open today. It's beautiful. I think Mr. Morris said he wanted a place where he could take his grandchild to use the restroom safely and cleanly. I think it meets those standards, so.
Great. Okay, we will move on to item 16, upcoming items. I will let everybody read those for themselves, and we will move to adjournment at 6:15. Thank you, everyone.